I'd like to call this meeting 7:42. Everyone, please rise.
[inaudible] The United States of America is a republic which is a nation under God, with the invisible liberty of us as a whole.
[inaudible]
Alderman Dunn, here. Alderman Satch, here. Alderman Will, here. Alderman Dawson, here. Alderman Carey, here. Alderman Ball, here. Alderman Mills, here. Alderman Chadd, here. Alderman Brown.
Excuse me. We have a long, uh, my please have a motion to dispense with the minutes of the previous meeting. Motion static. All in favor? Aye. And so approved. Do you get a motion to dispense with the meeting of the general bills?
Motion static.
All in favor? Aye. We will now enter into the public speaking portion of the meeting this evening. Just so you know, the council I set aside a thirty minute and a half time for this purpose. And when you're at the podium, we can give your name and address for the record and, uh, please address your comments to the council chair for the Alderman's not engaged in the debate at all. Thank you very much. Our speaker. Deborah Bresnan.
People, my name is Deborah Bresnan and I live on Abiel Street in Kingston. I've been actively involved in the executive committee of KingstonCitizens.org since last October when I first learned of the Niagara proposal. I want to thank the members of the common council caucus for their unanimous decision to recommend that resolution number one three four to amend the city charter to authorize a public referendum where the water powers be adopted by the full council. I urge you to vote yes and then to set in motion the required steps to place the referendum on the November ballot for a citizen vote. Including the common council to represent the public in decisions related to water sales outside of the city is the right course to take. We dodged a bullet when Niagara pulled out, but I am grateful for all we learned during those challenging times. Thank you for listening, researching, discussing, and reflecting deeply upon this complex issue. This thoughtful process has led us to a consensus, I believe, about the best way to protect our precious water supply from corporate profiteers and environmental vulnerabilities. The world is a very different place now than it was in eighteen ninety-five. Back then, people could not have imagined plastic water bottling plants or corporate grabs of our national resources. Today, these are real and present dangers. When considering the relationship between local government officials and the people they are elected to serve, trust is a key element. Voters elect leaders whom they believe will respect and listen to their concerns and opinions. Leaders who will problem solve and ask the hard questions when the people they represent raise legitimate issues. Leaders who pledge to work together on behalf of their constituents and alongside colleagues who serve as they do to create and then when necessary amend their shared system of governance. As leaders, you have earned the trust of your constituents. You have all felt the accumulated power of many citizens' concerns expressed over the past many months in public forums, letters, phone calls, and private discussions. All of us working together have played a part in bringing us to this moment tonight. I know I speak for many when I say thank you for your thoughtful attention and for your commitment to be good stewards of our water. Please vote yes on the resolution one three four. Thank you.
Next speaker please. Karen A. Wolf.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. My name is Karen Wolf. I live in Phoenician, New York. I also was active with Kingston Citizens and Sierra Club on the Niagara issue. So I've been here to speak to you before and I appreciate what you have done so far to help us protect our water. What I'm concerned about now is that droughts and depletion of groundwater resources are becoming more common and as supplies of clean potable water shrink and populations grow, we are going to come to realize how important it is to protect our waters. We have to recognize that water is not a commodity. It is essential for life and it's a gift given to us by the Creator like the air we breathe to sustain our lives. We cannot live more than a few days without drinking water and we cannot grow our food without water. The right to determine what happens to a public water supply, how it is used, and whether or not it is sold belongs in the hands of the people and their elected representatives. The people must have a say. I commend the Kingston Common Council for bringing forth and supporting a referendum to give the people Kingston well, some say over their water supply. This is how the democratic process should function and I also thank Mayor Yalla for agreeing to sign on if the bill passes. Kingston is setting an excellent example here and I call on Ulster County, New York State, and all the rest of the country to follow that example and to give people more of voice as to what happens to the water and the natural resources. The last threat to our borders came from Niagara Bottleneck. The next threat might come from a fracking company. We don't know. But giving people a voice in this matter will help protect us from many environmental and health threats in the future. So I thank you for taking a step in the right direction for both democracy and environmental justice and I urge you to please get this referendum before the people in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Rachel Marklowe-Heaven. Hello, thank you. My name is Rachel Marklowe-Heaven. I'm from Woodstock, New York. I'm an active member of KingstonCitizens.org since the Niagara proposal and I'm here today representing Earth Guardians, New York, which is a youth-led organization whose main focus is addressing solutions for climate change and working for the health and well-being of the planet now and for future generations. The founding of this chapter came about with a call of local young citizens who when they became aware of the Niagara proposal felt disenfranchised by the limitations of their age. They see even more the need for the protection of our water as public good with the reality that much of the country is in drought and many major bottling companies are now looking to the east coast for new resources. Our water should not be privatized in exchange for infrastructure development and restoration and if the children can see that and the current water board can't, there is ever a need for more checks and balances. In the same way that the children have felt disenfranchised, so have many other citizens and the municipalities concerned throughout particularly the last nine months and with the referendum like this one on the table, you are showing us that you see the need for our voices to be heard and I thank you. It's our responsibility to help our children feel safe and protected and so should all of the citizens of the municipalities that live in our water sheds feel safe and protected. As one who lives by the source of the city of Kingston's drinking water, many of us in Woodstock are more than willing to work with you to continue this conversation and to further bolster the protection of our collective promise. We are interdependent and the intermunicipal relationships are very important to honor and protect as well. Thank you so much for considering giving us a voice and I know this is just one little step, but, um, thank you and I hope you all continue to fight for it for us.
Thank you. Next speaker please. Aiden Ferris.
Hello, my name is Aiden Ferris. I'm twenty-one years old and I live in Phoenician, New York. I am a student at SUNY Ulster and I was very active in the, um, with Kingston Citizens as well as the school's environmental club to make sure that the students' voices were heard when Niagara came to our school through Startup NY. I started a petition asking that our school was in the partnership and we ended up getting over one thousand three hundred signatures. Um, I'm also a representative. I'm the youth director, the director of Earth Earthians, New York, um, and our mission is to get the youth active in connecting to earth, air, water, and atmosphere so that our generation and those to follow will inherit a healthy, just, and sustainable planet. We need to make sure that this resolution is passed so that our generation and the seven to come will have the resources that we see today. It's clear that all over the country, not even just in the West, but Maine is experiencing a drought as well and they have had many large bottling companies in their state for quite a while. So it's important that we protect our resources so that our, that the youth, so that all of our grandchildren, including mine, I don't even have kids yet, but when I do, I would like to know that they are going to have clean water and a healthy ecosystem, that they can feel comfortable playing in the water and they don't need to worry about plastic waste everywhere. So I just would like to back, um, back what everyone else said so far and just urge you all to think about the generations to come and to pass this resolution. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker please.
He doesn't have a word.
Good evening. My name is Anne Hemenway. I'm from Woodstock, New York. Thank you all very much for your consideration. I'm here in favor of the resolution and urge you to take every action possible to protect our water. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker please.
Sarah Apple.
Hi, my name is Sarah Apple. I'm in at sixty-three Johnston Avenue in Kingston and, uh, I want to second, uh, the comments of Deborah Bresnan and I'm here also with my husband Mark Holcomb and we're here in support of the referendum and ask that you vote yes. Thank you.
Next speaker. Naomi Schmidt.
Hi, my name's Naomi Schmidt. I live on McDaniel Road in Woodstock. I just want to second what everyone has already said. You don't need to have a whole lot more people talking and I really urge you and hope that you'll be okay this refer, referendum. Thank you.
Next speaker please. Georgia Asher.
Hello, I'm, I'm Georgia Asher. I'm at the Woodstock Land Conservancy and I hear, I'm here just to urge you to vote yes on resolution one thirty-four. It's very important that, uh, citizens and voters have some control over what happens to the water, not only here in Kingston, but in, in Woodstock as well. Thank you.
Next speaker please. Jennifer Schwartz-Burkey.
Hello, everyone. Jennifer Schwartz-Burkey, thirty-five Home Street. Um, I am also, among other things, policy and planning advisor to KingstonCitizens.org and we wish to thank you, um, we have, we're very grateful for the committee for bringing this to the floor for vote and we're also grateful to all of you because your vote is a stand for due process and transparency in Kingston. Your vote is a stand for the protection of the right, our right to decide how to utilize our resources. Your vote is a stand for participation in the environmental review process, which we had no, no participation in during the Niagara bottling situation and your vote is a stand for, an opportunity for us to determine how we protect our wealth. We are a rich, water-rich community and we deserve to protect that. Um, so in the coming weeks and months, let's work together to find the best ways that we can help businesses that are already the backbone of our community. Our economy is based in small businesses, in micro businesses. They are creating the lion's share of jobs. As the Wall Street Journal reported, we are spending more than seventy billion dollars a year across the country and seven billion in New York State to support programs like Startup New York, which do not offer most jobs to local residents. Let's also work together to protect our natural resources and decide how we use them. Uh, I look forward to working with you and I really appreciate all of you for your support in this referendum vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the speakers that signed up. Okay, I just have a point of information to just tell them, but the original resolution number one thirty-four had been changed to another resolution. The actual one thirty-four resolution is now going to be a local law with stronger legislation and that's what's required to go to the referendum. So this evening, it's a two-part thing, local law, this evening will be agreed and no discussion and then next month, second meeting, and vote. So that's how the local law is all of, just so you know, for clarification. Yes, ma'am?
I just knew that maybe ask everyone here who's in support of this referendum to stand up because there's a lot of people here who haven't spoken.
Okay, that's fine. If you would do that, if you want to stand up and support the local law now.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's no one else to speak, the public speaking portion this evening, I'm now going to close that part out. Now go to claims adjudication. Hearing no discussion, there'll be a filing for the court. I get a motion to dispense with the second meeting of the general bills. I'm saying. I have a second. Second. All in favor? Opposed. General bills, eight, zero. Now move on to the board of committees. Start with resolution number one twenty-three.
Resolution one twenty-three of two thousand fifteen, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to apply for tiger seven grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation, giving out a bulk, bulk of $500,000 for the Kingston connectivity project.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Opposed. Resolution is adopted, eight, zero. We now go to resolution number one twenty-four.
Resolution one twenty-four of two thousand fifteen, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing an adopting of bond ordinance with a sum of three hundred thousand dollars. It authorizes the mayor to execute all necessary experiments associated with East Chester Street platform dragon extension signalization project.
On the question, hearing no debate, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Opposed. The resolution is adopted, eight, zero. We now go to resolution number one twenty-nine.
Resolution one twenty-five of two thousand fifteen, bond ordinance dated June second two thousand fifteen, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of an additional three hundred thousand dollar bond for the city of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, to pay part of the cost of the trackhead signal system replacement project in and for said city.
Long roll. Alderman Dunn.
Yes.
Alderman Satch.
Yes.
Alderman Will.
Yes.
Alderman Dawson.
Yes.
Alderman Carey.
Yes.
Alderman Ball.
Yes.
Alderman Mills.
Yes.
Alderman Chadd.
Yes.
Line resolution is adopted, eight, zero. Now move on to resolution number one twenty-six.
Resolution one twenty-six of two thousand fifteen, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing an adopting of bond ordinance in a sum of twenty thousand dollars for fair street extension entrance exit construction and improvements for the former uptown parking garage site.
On the question, hearing no, Alderman Satch.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as a reminder, all of these, some is small here, combined with the train changing the traffic duration on curricular extension, essentially creating a shortcut to getting to the parking garage uptown and sort of ending what, you know, turned out to be a little bit more than a mile detour in order to get to the garage to lessen the tent. So I think we're, a lot, not just to include the traffic to crawl uptown, but certainly a lot less confusion for any visitors to the city.
Anyone else on the question before I call for the vote? Seeing no, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Opposed. Resolution is adopted, eight, zero. We now go to resolution one twenty-seven.
Resolution one twenty-seven of two thousand fifteen, bond ordinance dated June second two thousand fifteen, an ordinance authorizing improvements to the city parking lot located at twenty-one North Rock Street and in for the city of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of twenty thousand dollars and authorizing the issuance of twenty thousand dollar bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof.
Long roll. Alderman Satch.
Aye.
Alderman Will.
Yes.
Alderman Dawson.
Yes.
Alderman Carey.
Yes.
Alderman Ball.
Yes.
Alderman Mills.
Yes.
Alderman Chadd.
Yes.
Alderman Dunn.
Mr. President, I, I want to say that I think this is a good step for uptown. We obviously know that we need improvements, um, in uptown, we need more convenience for parking, a whole host of issues. And, and I was especially glad to see that the uptown business organizations that were organized, advocated for what they want and we follow through with their request. We also know that the city also has a number of infrastructure needs, number of those infrastructure needs, um, address public safety and the health of our community and we need to continue to fund those projects that are most serious as we go through our infrastructure assessment, um, analysis, uh, we're going to have more information, receive more information so that we can make better and more informed decisions going forward. We also know that we need to take additional steps uptown to improve some of the, some of the traffic patterns uptown and that includes the reversal of the streets, uh, as called for by the uptown stop and transportation plan. Number of business organizations, including the Uptown Business Association, the Pike Lane Commission, the Kingston Farmers Market, all advocated for that. Back to this issue, while I had some pause about funding these projects, especially when there are other projects that, that affect safety and, and public health, given the amount of space that we have in bonding, it gave me greater comfort. So knowing that we have a significant amount of room there, I think this is, this is a good step forward. It's a good addition to uptown and I'm a yes vote. Thank you.
Okay, the bond ordinance is adopted, eight, zero. Thank you. Now go to resolution number one twenty-eight.
Resolution one twenty-eight of two thousand fifteen, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing an adopting of bond ordinance with a sum of fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of materials and equipment to address persistent drainage problems.
On the question, hearing no debate, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Opposed. Resolution is adopted, eight, zero. Resolution number one twenty-nine.
Resolution one twenty-nine of two thousand fifteen, bond ordinance dated June second two thousand fifteen, an ordinance authorizing various stormwater improvement projects throughout and in and for the city of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of fifty thousand dollars and authorizing the issuance of fifty thousand dollars bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof.
Long roll. Alderman Will.
Yes.
Alderman Dawson.
Yes.
Alderman Carey.
Yes.
Alderman Ball.
Yes.
Alderman Mills.
Yes.
Alderman Chadd.
Yes.
Alderman Dunn.
Yes.
Alderman Satch.
Aye.
Bond is adopted, eight, zero. We now move to resolution number one thirty.
Resolution one thirty of two thousand fifteen, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing a city engineer to design and go out to bid for improvements to the uptown parking garage spare and access.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Opposed. Do you, no opposed? Resolution is adopted, eight, zero. We now go to resolution number one thirty.
Resolution one thirty-one of two thousand fifteen, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing repairs and restoration of the Foxville Stream Bank from femoral irreversible grant funding.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Opposed. Resolution is adopted, eight, zero. We now go to resolution number one thirty-two.
Resolution one thirty-two of two thousand fifteen, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing expenditure of funding for near state PEC contract C three oh three two zero zero.
On the question, hearing no debate, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Opposed. Resolution is adopted, eight, zero. We now go to resolution number one thirty-three. First person, Alderman Satch.
Follow through the discussion with, uh, the members of the council, I'd like to refer this back to the most, I think, preferred state.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Yes.
Is that going to be referred back to the, okay, so I'm going to move, um, refer back, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to talk back?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I think one of the, I think it's great that we're going to send this back to, for further analysis and further consideration. One of the things that we must always do when we assess what powers we're going to give up and how we're going to delegate our authority that the council has, is whether or not we should give up that power and whether or not, uh, what the consequences of giving up that power may be because at the end of the day, we know we're still responsible for the purse. So if something goes wrong and we have to pay for it, they come to like somebody, the organization, the, whatever it may be, will come to the council for that reimbursement. So I think, I think we just have to make any decision when we give up powers of the council with our eyes wide open and make a knowingly intelligent decision. So I think it's good that we're sending this back and so that we can assess thoroughly what powers we want to delegate, if any, uh, to, to another entity. Thank you.
Do anyone vote to send it back? Okay, voting to refer back is accepted as eight, zero. We now go to resolution number one thirty-four.
Resolution one thirty-four of two thousand fifteen, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing a settlement for the claim of Elizabeth K. Bill and Donald Timbrough against the city of Kingston.
On the question, hearing no debate, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Opposed. Resolution is adopted, eight, zero. We now go to resolution number one thirty-five.
Resolution one thirty-five of two thousand fifteen, resolution of the city of Kingston, New York, accepting the G A S B forty-five report for the fiscal year ended December thirty-first, two thousand fourteen.
On the question, hearing no debate, I'll call for the vote, all in favor. Opposed. Resolution is adopted, eight, zero. We now go to resolution number one thirty-six.
Resolution one thirty-six in two thousand fifteen, refunding bond ordinance dated June second two thousand fifteen, an ordinance authorizing the issuance pursuant to section ninety dot ten of the local finance law of refunding bonds to the city of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, to be designated substantially public improvement. Ulster County, New York, to be designated substantially public improvement refunding serial bonds, and providing for other matters in relation thereto, and the payment of the bonds to be refunded therewith.
Long roll.
Alderman Dawson?
Yes.
Alderman Carey?
Yes.
Alderman Law?
Yes.
Alderman Mills?
Yes.
Alderman Chadd?
Yes.
Alderman Dunn?
Yes.
Alderman Sash?
Just a comment on it, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank everyone, and thank the director, particularly our controller, Mr. Tewey, he saw the opportunity, the city will save in excess of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars of late payments, and this sort of fiscal stewardship that we certainly appreciate, all assistance, thank you, yes.
On the other hand?
Yes.
The law is adopted, eight zero. Now move to Resolution Number One Thirty Seven.
Resolution Number One Thirty Seven of two thousand and fifteen, An ordinance pending ordinance in relation to traffic on public streets of the city of Kingston, New York, mending no parking zone on Green Hill Avenue.
On the question, there is no...
Mr. President?
All in favor.
I just want to question, last night in caucus, we had spoke of revising this to exclude, can we have that? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on the question? There is no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the resolution is adopted, eight zero. Now move to Resolution Number One Thirty Eight.
Resolution One Thirty Eight of two thousand and fifteen, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Marie Russo and Helen Russo as the secretary of the State of Victor Russo.
On the question?
Mr. President?
All in law.
Having been on this council and on the Finance Committee for the last four years, I have been always very proud of the fact that we are very, very careful about how we go and how, what kind of precedent we are setting, including the city far, not only for this council and this board, but for all the councils and all the mayors that would follow us. This problem that we've had on Washington Avenue has been very time-consuming and very heartbreaking for the people who live in that area. I think everybody on this council has known more about storm drains, and tunnels, and drought, and the equipment that needs to be used, and we've seen pictures, and we've spent countless hours discussing what needs to be done on Washington Avenue, and I just commend all the people who live there for being so patient and understanding and doing the right thing, not only for the city, not only for the neighborhood, but for the entire city. What this family is asking is despicable, there's no other words for it. We have had many residents from that area come to us, including the Devella Pizza, Mr. Devella, not Devella Kitchen, numerous times asking us for financial help because of what he was going through on Washington Avenue. His business closed as a result of Washington, he now is open in the town of Ulster. And we did not go in favor of giving him a tax break because we were concerned about the precedent going forward. We are very, very responsible fiscally, our chair of the Finance Department is phenomenal, Mayor Mayne has done an incredible job, and again, we are very, very conscious about having spent every dime. We have a department head who came to us who is doing fundraising, so he can run his department. We have one less police officer on the street because we don't have the funds necessary to fill that position. The fire department has been years for equipment that has needed to be replaced. Every department has done more with less, and I cannot in the conscience vote to hand over a ransom check to this family because they are holding the hospital, the city of Kingston hostage, there are no other words to describe that, and I, I cannot in the conscience vote in favor of this, shame on this family, I'm a no.
Anyone else on the question?
Mr. President? So, last day, two thousand and eleven, a state of emergency was declared for Washington Avenue from the Boulevard to Linderman Avenue, and it has remained closed till today. I have advocated for many of the people that live in that area, I've attended neighborhood meetings, I held a public hearing last year for concerned citizens of this community coming to speak their mind, their concerns about what was going on in Washington Avenue. I've weighed the pros and the cons, I've looked at the concerns, what is going on, and to delay the sinkhole repair, any longer to me is not acceptable, however, I concur that we're being held accountable for this resolution that's in front of us. And I do have to clarify, when Mr. Devella came to the Finance Committee, he didn't come to the Finance Committee looking for a tax reduction on his business, he owns other properties on Washington Avenue that are not affected by the sinkhole, they are further down, and that was his request, was for a tax break on those properties, it wasn't a request for his business, therefore, it was disapproved. Based on everything that I have done, the research, the press releases, the articles that have been in the paper, the, over thirty times has this item appeared on the finance agenda, and I'm a voice for the people, and I'm going to be a yes voter because this needs to be corrected, and it needs to be done, thank you.
Anyone else on the question before I call for the vote, Mr. President?
All in session.
I agree with that, we've been talking about this, we as a you guys, long before I've been here, the sinkhole problem has been the subject of so many meetings and articles and Facebook jokes, whatever, I really, I dislike, I dislike my mic going out, I really dislike the thought of paying this amount of money to someone, but I really think we have to pay and move forward, I mean, the people on Washington Avenue have suffered long enough, by not approving this, we're just going to delay getting their lives back tomorrow, so I would be as bold as this.
Anyone else on the question?
Mr. Devell? So, we're in a really difficult direction moment right now, I am, I think we don't have, we have a choice here, but I think we, on the other hand, we don't have much of a choice, we have to get this, this project started, it's been around since well before, several of our terms began, and I don't know that there's any other way we can proceed but to, to say yes to this, this resolution. But, in looking at this historically, I have, I have to ask myself, because I've...
Phone calls and emails and...
Phone calls and emails, just in the last day, because this has been news, we just found out, it left an hour that we were looking at this last easement, as the last stop between us and the work starting, and a one point four million dollar Economic Development Administration Grant. So, I had to ask myself, what's the history with this grant? Why are we at this late date seeking, still seeking easements? So, I did look back on the history of this because we had, we had an early start of this a couple of years ago. It was in August of two thousand and thirteen that a G D A engineer put together technical engineering drawings that showed where the work was being proposed, this is fairly accurate delineation of where the work was going. So, we, we had some inkling of what properties were going to be affected at that point, and we also knew that there is an E D A grant because this is called Washington Avenue Tunnel Stabilization, Tanary Brooklyn Bay, and claiming a surface restoration engineering report, E D A project number zero one seven nine one four two one seven, and this is August two thousand and thirteen, submitted to Ralph Swanson, our city of here. Just prior to that, in June of two thousand and thirteen, the Common Council, previous term, awarded one point nine, supported the bond for one point nine million dollars, and this E D A grant, the same number, award was mentioned here, June two thousand and thirteen. In May of two thousand and thirteen, there was a letter to our economic development director, Mr. Greg Swanty, from E D A, stating, "I reviewed the on the signed engineering agreement with G D A Engineering to run this project, the agreement is submitted, is approved, however, until the signed agreement is provided, the contract will not eligible E D A funding." Once signed, once the signed agreement is provided, the special condition thirteen, whatever that is, the grant agreement will be satisfied." That was in May of two thousand and thirteen, just over two years ago. In April of two thousand and thirteen, a letter to you, Mr. President, regarding the E D A award number, same, from Ralph Swanson, talked about what needs to be done in order to proceed with the grant and the project. And, in December of two thousand and twelve, the new word, the ad was placed by Ralph Swanson for initial word referencing E D A project, award number same. So, that takes us back to the end of the two thousand and twelve on this project, so work was diligently being sought. Now, the question of easements, why were easements sought prior to last year? Well, you can look on the web and find documents that talk about the E D A construction standards, and this is from two thousand and seven. Talks about what needs to be done for an E D A grant to be awarded, and eminent domain is not one of the tools that municipality can use, however, it's very clearly stated here that these terms have to be secured, so this is not a mysterious process. So, why don't we go back on all this, because I think it's not fair to just look at the neighbors and residents and say it's their fault, because it's not. The city bears some responsibility here, and I will be voting yes on this tonight because we got to get this going. But at the same time, I will say that in all fairness to the people who live on Washington Avenue and in that affected area, in contrast to this common council, that we consider creating some form of aid fund, because singling out one homeowner, one property owner, is simply not fair, and we have to be aware of the ill will and the problems that this could cause. I want to see this work start as soon as possible, but I also want to be very crystal clear that we could have handled this in a forthright way, and be possibly done with this a year ago, which would have saved, saved a lot of money, but here we are tonight, and I'll be a yes voter, thank you.
Anyone else on the question before I call for the vote? Seeing no one else, and then we'll call for the vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Just be opposed, raise your hands, please. Okay, the resolution is adopted, seven, one. Now move into further reading of Local Law Number Two.
Local Law of two thousand and fifteen, of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, commending article eleven, section C eleven dash five, the charter to the city of Kingston by getting thereto, a requirement that a contract with same order outside the city of Kingston must be approved by the Common Council and mayor of the city.
And that was said, perjury of local law, no discussion, all action. The last two moves are to maybe be brought to this evening. Boy, I asked about what you moved on, or anything else?
Mr. President?
Or Mills?
I would like to end this meeting in honor of Len King. Len King was a prominent figure in this community, he dedicated much of his life to the people of Hudson Valley, he was the past president of the Chamber of Congress, he served on committees such as the Lions Club and the Library, for example. He was also known as a respected numerous, and we remember as such, you will be asked to thank him.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in session.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to close this meeting in honor of Robert Senior, who passed away today. He was a retired O B M, longtime resident of Kingston, current, his last residence was Towne and Ulster, but most of his time was spent here in Kingston. And the reason why I'd like to close this meeting in honor of him is because as a young girl, I remember thinking, boy, I'd like to have him be my dad, he was a wonderful father, even though he worked all his life, he spent time with every one of his kids in the way that a father should, and family is a basis and a foundation that I think all of us need to look to as a positive thing, I think most of us do, so I'd like to close this meeting in honor of Robert, now Senior, thank you.
All in session.
Mr. President, I'd like to close the meeting in memory of Barbara Ruff Salvino, Barbara was a longtime eighth ward resident, before was the eighth ward, even, she was a hardworking mom, very active in city affairs, and Barbara was just a good person to talk to, and would walk around the neighborhood about anything, always had a good word to say about everybody, and we're going to miss her in the neighborhood.
Anyone else? There's no one else, I have a lot of people here. Second, all in favor, all in opposed, hereby, standing adjourned for the next round of meeting.